Councilor, Council meeting, order made of 17th, City of St. John. Any additions to the agenda? Do you need to move on?
I need to put some of the Jubilee in front of business, please.
Under you.
The business is you.
Oh, it's true, your business.
Any other additions to the agenda?
Motion proof.
Second.
All favor. Any more discussion? Pass five minutes. Consent agenda, approve the minutes for the council meeting, May 3rd, 2022.
So the second.
Motion is second. All favor. All opposed? Pass five minutes. Appropriation orders, 517, 2022, $26,708.52. Is there any motion?
No moves.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Any more discussion? All favor?
Upstate.
Upstate, two of them, that's a three. Department headed. Citizen comments.
Hi, so I'm Kathleen Norman. We're with the Childcare Committee and we also have Shannon. So, the Childcare Committee formed last fall looking at how to address the need for childcare in Stafford County. It's been a collaborative effort. St. John right now has the most critical need for childcare. About 70% of the need is in St. John and the overall survey showed that 7 to 100 kids currently could benefit from having childcare. So, we are, our plan from looking at evaluating the situation here would be to bring in a modular classroom that would allow for two providers to operate. Each side of that could hold up to 10 children depending on the ratio of like infants, toddlers, and other kids. So, that would take care of at least 20 new spots. Currently, we only have two licensed daycares in St. John and a third one's getting ready to open. But again, when we need, you know, closer to like 50 spots for children currently, it's just an issue that's not going to go away anytime soon. So, we would like to bring in a modular and just the cost to bring in the building would be $65,000 and then there'd be additional site work to be done, the concrete footings, doing decking and skirt, doing a fenced play area and some minimal supplies to kind of have the stuff outfitted. This would all stay within ownership, so we'd cycle in and out providers as they chose to operate a daycare in that facility. I don't know if you guys have any questions?
So this would essentially create two, two jobs, two daycares.
Potentially 20 children to be able to go to daycare.
Where are you guys looking at putting something like this?
So, we've talked about a number of options. We're still kind of evaluating economic development on some land that it could go on next to like the house on Broadway. We own a fair bit of land behind the grocery store currently, but we'd also be looking at if there's a better location and could we acquire land. There had been initial talk maybe next, on the square next to our building, but at least our board had felt that they would like to see maybe something else go there than a modular building. But if that was where, like if the city was there, yeah, I don't know if that was a good location, then I'm sure they would reconsider that.
Do you, so you're asking for, for $65,000 from the city for the one, from the 1% sales tax?
Yes.
How, how are you guys, I mean, do you have the other funds for the rest of the stuff?
We don't currently. We've been to county commission to request ARPA funds and they told us they would like to see a commitment from the city first before they decide. They haven't yet met to decide their final allocations of all the ARPA funds, but they do view childcare as a priority.
So do you, did you approach them for like the same amount, like $65,000?
We approached them for the whole amount.
For much more.
Yeah, we approached them for the full amount for here and a Maxwell location and they said to go to the cities first and then they would evaluate a commitment after that. The reason we went with the 65 is if we can secure the building, it'll be a lot easier to have the momentum to get private donations, both of cash or in kind, to make sure that everything else is situated. But if we can't kind of secure a building, then I feel like the timeline for this could drag out significantly longer to get to the cash needed to carry it out.
The cost of the building is how much?
So $65,000 for the building for them to deliver and for them to anchor it.
Okay, okay. I'm sure you already said that.
No, that's okay. So like we'd still be on the hook for like utility hookups, getting the concrete footings for it to be placed on, the skirting, deck ramp installation.
I heard that.
I think it's 24,000.
Yeah, we're on the third page.
We've had some donations given already, but we feel like more donations would roll in whenever there's progress that's tangible that the community can see.
Not only that, if they know that $65,000 is coming from the city, it might push the commissioners and others to go ahead and give. I think it's a, it'd be very good, very good deal. I think there's.
I think it's a worthwhile project which we're undertaking and it's definitely needed within this community and as you said, it's.
I'm still working on it.
You've got, I don't know, families.
That appears.
It's very desperate, yeah.
Yeah, it's very desperate, right.
If you look to see whether this is going to be okay based on the state guidelines.
Fire, Marshall, and KDHG are on board.
Fire doors and all that.
Well, in Edward County, they've already done it. Well, they're on their second project, so they have a module at the school that they're already operating out of and they're bringing in a new one that will be similar to what we're proposing here. And so, it needs Fire, Marshall, and KDHG guidelines to be licensed.
This is a double wide mobile home for 16, not that long?
It's not a double wide mobile, well, I mean, it's a dou, it is a double wide, but if you, a classroom modular versus a house modular.
One piece, one piece or?
I think it's two based on dimensions. So I think it would still come more as a double wide because it's about 15,000 square feet total and then it's cut in half for the two classrooms. I think 60 is one dimension, like 24 is the other, so you'd have to split that for road
What do you have in mind?
Well, so, you know, say, say we did go through this, you know, basically, say we donate $65,000, obviously the project goes through.
Right.
And 1% minus what we have in that.
Almost $300.
355,000.
So what we generated from spiritual?
That's what it is as a 430.
That's the money we get left on the 1%.
Not left because we continue, but yeah.
It adds every month.
Yeah, we're aware of that.
We proceed it in.
So really, we would be just over 300 with the $50,000 that we've already committed for this year because we haven't paid that out yet.
305 and $65,000, but you're still going to add monthly to it and we average between 12 and 15,000 a month that goes into the 1% sales tax. So, it's another one of those situations that by the end of the year, you could, in theory, put that $65,000 back in there easily. I think it's a good deal. I mean, I'm all on board for doing the $65,000. That's what that money's there for, is for economic development in our city and that's, I think it'd be a great use.
Is that your motion?
I take a motion to donate $65,000 towards the Stafford County Childcare Committee.
You got a second? We got a motion, $65,000, that was the 1% sales tax on the table. We've got a second, any more discussion on this, the building daycare. Motion and a second. All favor? All opposed?
Upstate, I'm on the committees.
Passes four, the one, block, uh, 16.
Well, thank you guys. This will be very helpful and moving the project forward.
Yes.
Good luck with everything else.
Thank you.
Off topics that, uh, Kirsh, Kirsh's taxes, you like that?
Yeah, I need to, yeah.
Did I have word?
Are they doing away with Kirsh's taxes? It would be the state's proportion of the, not the county. Yeah, I was concerned about that.
Those dollars.
I'm not saying they're not going to get pressure.
It's not a good way to go away until 2024, so.
It's just the state is six.
Any more discussion? Moving on, Electric Department, Jeff.
All I can tell you is very slow. We're just having a really hard time getting material to keep this second street deal going. We're waiting weeks and weeks and weeks on parts and pieces just to get the underground in and that stuff. When we finish this project, we'll have used all the patent on transformers we have. I would like to go ahead and stick my nose in and see if I could order some. They're probably a year out, I imagine, or real close right now. I will have, the only spare that I will have if we finish this project completely down here is the one that goes to the truck parking. I have one that needs to go in to be repaired. The guy at Newton said he would repair it, it'd be eight weeks out to get it repaired. But other than that, I mean, we're, you know, we're keeping up with everything else, but just material as a general is just really the pits. I mean, it's just, it's really tough to get wire. Sometimes it's easy, sometimes it's six and eight weeks out. What we're waiting on right now is what they call the duct plugs, which go down inside the steel conduit where we bring the risers up from the underground. We don't have the duct plugs that separate the wire so that we can go ahead and energize them and get that underground energized. So we're not going to stick the wire in until I see them. They can get skinned up really bad if they're not separated really well, so, you know, and it's, it's just parts and pieces. I mean, it's, one day you get something, you don't get anything for a week. We've got everything ready to pull and walk. It's just a matter of getting the finishing parts to get it done where we can get it hooked up. But I also am trying to look ahead, you know, the way this deal's going, it doesn't look like it's going to have a cure anytime in the next couple of years, I don't think. And I'm trying to look ahead to do some, I have some other underground that I have in my notebook that, that we've measured, that if fall comes and it looks like we could get the material, why we may go ahead and try and get the pipe board in before winter and get it up, some on the east side of town to clean up some overhead across the highway and one going into Tony Delft's to get out of his tree row. But those are, are ones that we'll have the wire for. I figured them in on the other deals and with the reels that we've gone, but I just won't have the transformers. So, anyway, and to try and clean that entryway up on 4th Street and put it underground and kind of help that a little bit, so, you know, we're just, we're going day by day, but material's a big thing. The wire reel's about done, should be done tonight, I think. We're going to go ahead and test it out and see how it works.
Should be done tonight.
Should be done tonight. Yeah, I was out this morning. We've had a little trouble getting it to tilled at the right spot to go down far enough, but we were just taking everything off of pictures, you know, we really didn't have any measurements, so, but it's come along really well, it looks good, so, you know, it'd just be a matter of painting it, the hydraulics for the drive on the wind on the wheel we'll put in afterwards. We just wanted it so that we could use a brake and get it slowed down, use it to pull some overhead, so, you know, if we don't start, we don't start getting some underground material, we may, we may look at buying a load of poles and rebuilding some overhead, you know, if we can get the poles in, they've got the wire. The only thing we'd have to have would be the arms and the poles, so, you know, I guess we'd just try and kill one or the other one way, you know, to try and stay ahead of this deal, but that's kind of where we're at, so. I, I've got a leak in the boom in the bucket truck and the big truck. We're going to try and take it to Hutcheson this week and get it looked at. I imagine they will want to change all the hoses when they do it. Could be fairly extensive, so, trucks, 27 years old, so, might not hurt to start looking out on the end for something that's a few years old, you know, and try and buy it at a lesser rate than a brand new, so, that's about where I'm at.
Counsel, have any questions for Jeff?
Jeff on the bucket truck. I mean, I know it's something we got to have and we got to get it fixed, but you might start looking at getting those prices, what, a couple of year old trucks?
I think if we stay with an Altec truck, it can be 40 years old and they'll still work on it. That kid told me that, the guy that works on our little truck, so, I'm probably going to stay in that direction, so I'll, I'll do some looking and see what's out there. Try and have you something the next council meeting or the one after, one or two, so, sure. Maybe in the meantime, I can get that one down there, we can see what it's going to cost to even fix it, you know, or what you want to do, so, okay.
Any else, any questions for Jeff? Moving on, Water Department, Jason.
I don't have nothing except for the back truck and Jamie can take care of that since she has the paperwork. Sitting on the dole?
Yes, I did. So in your packets, you got the quote from Key Equipment. This was everything that you went through and found wrong. So, there you go.
I'm just going to say this and I don't care what it really means to anybody else, but.
Right.
That's a quote that they don't even want to work on, they want to sell the truck.
Well, I guess.
I mean. Yeah, 10,000 on hoses, miscellaneous welding supplies, 20,000, 56 for labor.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I think that, like Jeff has showed me what to look, like I can just keep looking. The, the back truck and the bucket truck are definitely the two items that we need to replace next, so if we just keep looking, then maybe eventually we can come up with something. Because that is.
I think maybe we need to look at a back trailer instead of the truck. That might just be my, my idea. I think you can be a lot cheaper with a back trailer than you will a truck.
What is, what trailer, a trailer that has not a back trailer?
The trailer we have is a sewer trailer and it just, it's jets water.
It doesn't suck it up.
It doesn't suck anything. What, was it Amarine that done all the boring or was that Golden Belts?
No, Amarine did the boring. They had one, Golden Belts got one, if you want to look at a ditch with, they've had it in town. It usually sets up a bobs or it has been up there, that's where they park it. Nice little trailer.
I mean, I think a truck, we paid what, 20,000 for that truck or 25?
24, $5,000.
Do we know what they run, the trailers?
I don't know what a trailer runs, but it's not going to be 300,000 like a truck.
I would suggest if you want to look at one, you have Jamie get some prices on it, on a vacuum trailer. They get the dump on them, they're just not as big and chances are we don't need one that big.
No, I think at the time when we bought this truck, it was used, it was close and it.
Served a purpose?
Served a purpose.
Jason, if she finds one or you find one or whoever, you got some projects, you try it out on, see if it's something that would work.
A lot of storms here.
Yeah, just to see if a trailer would, sear trees, I mean, I think what we have is maybe an overkill, I don't know.
It's an overkill if you're going to spend 123,000 on it to fix it.
It's used a lot, but you have to use a lot to fit it up.
Our sewer rates don't justify fixing it or buying a brand new truck, I can say I mean, we can't even get, we can't even get loans because of our rates, so.
What do you, what do you think we ought to do with the old one?
Or not loans, but.
Right back on where it come from.
I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't. I'd sell it.
As is.
Oh, as is? I didn't know if you wanted to try to fix it and just run it in the ground.
I would.
You mean?
Just fix that little phony motor and let's just run it in the ground, because we, I was thinking we can probably, we can do a lot of, with that big a hose on there and as long as the back truck, the back part worked on it, we could do a lot of, it cleaned those sewer, storm sewer and I don't mind wearing muddy water.
Yeah, it just doesn't sound very safe to me, also, I mean, I don't know, some of those hoses.
Pretty bad, but.
I don't know. Whatever else thinks.
Any other questions for Jason from the council? Is that the direction you want him to go?
Let this do some looking.
Option, hold on to it for a little while.
Figure out what we're going to do.
See if we can find a trailer or look at a trailer. It's up to you guys.
That's what I would say. Look in the trailers, see if you can get one to try it out, see if it's going to work.
Yeah, I think that.
See what maybe kind of size you need.
That's what the direction, counsel kind of wants you to go, kind of look around for maybe some trailers. You're right? Any other question?
Do you want to, you want to try to put that on the purple way sometime because we still got that mower over there?
I think we'll wait.
Wait on it for a while?
Yeah, I don't think we listed yet.
Okay.
Till we make a decision on what we're doing.
Moving on, Streets and Parks. Nothing? Any questions swing on Streets and Parks? Police chief, not here? Oh, yeah. You setting in for her? She got anything? Bar chief, Mike, he's not hidden, hiding nowhere. City Mr. Jamie.
Nothing really, Jubilee's in two weeks. Pam and I have been grinding down all of like the small details and getting ready to start pushing raffle tickets and just letting everyone know what we have going on, so.
Any questions for counsel for Jamie? John, you got anything to advise us of?
I don't have anything yet.
Counsel, anything they want to talk to John about? Okay. Old business, property code violations, 647 East Fifth, 651 East Fifth, and 808 North Broadway. Anybody want to talk about that?
Take North Broadway off there.
Take North Broadway off there, okay.
Oh, that's good. I'd like to see us add about five or six more properties to that list and start the process. Can you start any of this?
Oh, I have, I have my list, my own going list. Marshall's, Marshall's list trumps mine though, so.
Why does mine trump yours?
Because it's the same. And you can evaluate housing better than I can.
Well, I don't know about that. Well, I know we have tried and I don't know, did we ever actually really do anything other than talk to them about the Glasscock House?
Don't, don't mess me because these things.
So the state's got to lean on it. The family wants to give it to us. The state's got to lean on it.
It's the state's lean.
I think it's a medical lean of some type.
The family did say that they would.
That's what I've been told from, uh, Steve Kirby.
And nobody's, nobody's in it, not being around it or anything?
It's got a hole in the roof.
Yeah, that's a lot. But it's also in worse condition from when you tried the floor.
We just have to visit with the state, they probably have the authority to do something.
You can probably visit better than I could when I tried it.
Would the family let us go in and take pictures?
Yeah, I think so.
Show some light with the roof.
I mean, they pretty much, I think at one time said they wanted nothing to do with it, they weren't going to mow it, they weren't going to fix it and they weren't paying the property taxes on it. And I know it's on the tax auction.
And they did not probate the estate?
We have a couple houses in town that are going to be, did you put Gary's house on there? They're just waiting.
Gary's house.
On 4th?
It's on the tax auction.
Okay, just kidding.
So what happens to these houses that you do tear down and then they don't mow the lot or anything?
The city loses.
Yeah.
And then the lot goes on the tax.
The mowing goes on the tax.
So, yeah, like we're assessing all the tear down costs and everything to the.
But then eventually, that lot eventually goes.
To tax sale, yeah, tax sale. But you got to wait till it's delinquent for three years. I just assume they donate it, we tear it down and then clean it up.
We have given them that option though. So you have Glasscock.
Yeah, last time, instead of hiring somebody, I go up and I get title for the last batch and try to figure out what leans, because one time we hired somebody to do it and then I think last time we had enough that it was worth it for me to just do it.
Yeah, the last round, you done them all.
Okay.
Because that's when we done, one on North Exchange.
This whole list?
Yeah, this whole list, the last ones you done all there.
That would be the place to start, I mean, we could visit with, with the state.
But we got one up on 9th Street by the, by the skate park and the old tennis court that needs to come down. I think we need to be back on the one on South Monroe, Bob Toots' house. The Dill house on First Street's in horrible shape.
Yes, and I think she's.
The trailer house on Southwest Street.
Yes.
And we need to get on the guy that owns VFW and the rest ripped up on it and it'll be leaking in there and destroyed before long. Methodist church is on there.
This one? Are you trying to start? Did you guys get a quote from that?
You know, probably, like six or seven years ago, we had a quote on it.
Yes, I'm sure.
Probably we should send them a, I'm not going to disagree, we probably ought to get ahold of them on the old Methodist church.
What about still alive?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think he had, wasn't that guy that wanted to start the school there?
Yeah, but he doesn't own it. There was a lot of tax sale for $35.
Yeah, it went to tax sale and that one lady has it. My sister's mom. Yeah, she was the one.
Share Grove Road.
Yeah.
What about the one shop last?
Yes.
The Herter House?
Yeah.
It's got a tarp cover in the roof.
The tarp's gone.
Well, it has a tarp cover in the roof, yes.
I feel like they're going to worry if I had.
Yeah, I think it is.
Start the listing, keep going. Start the listing, keep going?
All one through the state.
Yeah. Well, we can always send a special here today, too, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know, I'm sure there's probably others that I've missed.
Worked last time.
I think those are the worst, right downtown.
And I guess if you find owners of these, you might, it might be something that the land bank would even pay them something for just to buy them from them and get them out of their control and into ours and save, save a lot of headache for the city.
Yep.
All the proceedings and everything like that. It might be worth a phone call just to touch base with them and say, well, you can donate it to the land bank.
So, are you directing me to continue on these certain properties, these areas?
Yeah.
I would be, yeah. We don't need a motion for that.
Add another one to it, one on Fourth and two eighty-one.
Sure.
Good. I don't know whether it's possible, the stipulations of...
The house behind the shop is, all that back area?
All, all the vehicles, all the units, nothing's moved from in front of that place for ten years. I mean, it's all set there in the same place.
I agree with the criteria.
But it's not really an operating business anymore. It's just...
I mean, if we're doing it, we might as well, because...
Maybe it puts some pressure on them, but...
And it has worked, and I think, I feel like people are pretty happy with what you guys have been doing these days.
I really think you need a director, cause I think it probably falls under your authority. Somebody has authority to, to keep these houses on the go.
You wanna just start with that letter and...
Yeah, unless you want me to look at the title, the phone gotta be up here tomorrow, but I don't, have to be up here until ten, I don't know how long that would take, probably. I'll visit tomorrow, exit the area.
I can get all the addresses to you?
What order did we go last time, when we do title and, uh, like, take pictures?
Try to figure out the problems on it, figure out what we can do from the street. I think there was only one person that didn't give us permission to the house, and then we asked the district court for permission, and the district court gave us two of them. Most people left in the house or had, sometimes she...
Did we write a letter first, though, like, giving them a chance to do any sort of cleanup before the hearing?
Color gets worse now.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're tall, um, I'd have, I'd have to look at more of them.
Yeah, it may not seem as, kinda fair to give them thirty days, like, before the hearing to get it cleaned. I don't remember the order we did it, it worked last time, whatever we did it.
At the hearing, you ordered them, give them a deadline to...
To clean it up?
And it's really, the statute says commence, but not, or pair of, period.
And if not, then we have a decision.
Okay. We give them a deadline, and if they don't have significant progress or doesn't satisfy us, we say you're done, we tear it down.
Just like with the house I'm buying, like, he took off that porch and that, helped the property, and he didn't...
So, we make the list, do the title search, take the pictures, have the hearing.
Give them a deadline, and if it's not done by then, then that's what we just, okay?
Yeah, you need to the title search stuff here, you have to set a order. A lot of times it's grandma's house, and somebody thinks it's theirs, but it's...
Sounds good.
Got your list, Jamie? Any other thing on property code violations? Moving on, truck parking, anybody wanna talk about that?
Yeah. Where are we at on that project? We need to figure something out. We just spent a hundred thousand dollars, and we just redone this street right out here, and it's already getting tore up.
Do we have a ordinance with, uh, with people with some of those parks?
It's a new street this year.
They're not, they're not to have loaded trucks, and that clearly was a loaded truck.
Well, if we're gonna spend that much money on streets...
I mean, we just redone Broadway right here last year, overlaid.
And I turned in the alley, and it's gone, yeah.
But the biggest problem is, we gotta start getting drainage to the highway. What have we gotta do then? Or yeah, try to contact?
I tried contacting two different companies, the people from Pratt never got that hold of me.
I guess, I guess that's the hangup, just the drainage.
At this point, I don't care less if we widen the road and dig some deep ditches and let it hold the water. I'm fine with that.
That's fine, so do we. See, but, correct the basis, do that.
We need, we need to go, we need to take our right of way out there, distance of our deal on the north end, south side, we'll clear back to our right of ways and widen that whole entire road, put back of the ditches, the back of the right of ways, and make it wide, dig it deep. If you want to put the truck parking up there.
Can you hear? What are we putting for? They had culverts in there, but I think we're gonna have to pick a one.
Yeah. Culverts and rock.
Rock or...
Yeah, there is, there's fiber in it.
Is there a crush?
On the tree?
Yeah.
It's pretty deep.
We looked at several options.
You say there's sunlight or...
There's fiber in there, fiber on the south side.
South side?
Yes.
Who's this?
It was put in, it's, uh, it's telephone coves.
Yeah, we had, we had all the prices.
No, no, it's, it belongs, yeah, but there's another one out there, too, because we buried it when I first came here.
Cause they have crushed brick now?
They buried it down, south side Eighth Street. I think it belongs to the telephone. I don't think it was golden, but that one was the one that was working. Wonder if they got one in there, too?
We've spent enough money.
I think we need to locate a pressure.
You need to go...
It's been a little deeper up there.
State, man. I mean, we either finish that project out there, or I say we enact the ordinance and there's no trucks on our city streets, and we give them the loan, and we're done with it, they can find their own place to park their trucks. Cause I'm not, I'm not gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars a year to fix our streets and to have loaded trucks tearing up.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous.
It is.
So, we either fix that problem out there with our truck parking and give them a spot, or we just...
We follow the ordinance.
We put the ordinance in effect and give them a month to figure it out, and after a month, we start finding them every time they're in town on our streets.
Now, we don't have a parking place there.
Not yet.
It's prepared.
It's prepared, it's just not put into effect.
We have a truck route once.
Yeah, we have a truck route, so.
Yep.
Well, I'd say, I'd say we can get down the truck parking out there, drain it, I mean, Jason, is that something?
It's scary.
I, I know you're busy, but...
I'm a little nervous about it, man. We'll see what happens, I mean, that's all I can say.
Who have we contacted on it? What's the one out of Pratt, East of Pratt?
Fields, Simpson.
Fields, Simpson. So, Fields and Simpson, so we have the...
Yes.
Who did that? I don't know.
Who did the, one of them did the all there.
I suppose Fields does, I don't know why he wouldn't.
That's what he came up and gave me, what was it, eighty thousand dollars?
Eighty thousand dollar quote from an engineer to draw a line.
He might suggest taking sand over the front, maybe plug in that one.
I'm gonna call him, Stone, I called Stone, and he never came out. I'm calling.
Fields and Simpson.
You what?
Can't find a line.
Get, get something, eighty thousand dollars.
I think, yes, sure, sure. Jason's got a busy streets and...
He's just worried about the...
Yeah.
So, if they buried it deep enough, not, they might...
Maybe if we just give directions, they'll be fine.
And I, I just think we, if we can't make it flow, we just need to make our ditches big enough all along there to hold the water if it rains a lot, and build them up.
Lots of skeeters are running.
And I think we probably oughta rock that whole thing from two eighty-one at least to our west entrance. But, I mean, we can decide that at a later time. I mean, you need to have some...
I can sit there and try to get ahold of Dustin, see if he can help me get his back trailer here. We could sit there and try to find out on each side of that. I already got the permit to sit there and start digging on this, all I, and then I can measure how long we want that, that driveway to be with, uh, the culvert. And then I can just, I, I, cause I need to find that line, so I will not hit it, and then I can start digging it up at the back hole, and then we can get the culvert put in.
We got an eight inch?
And then start, not first, but then we can start digging that and then lay that culvert in it.
Then we got an eight inch water line going through there, too.
So, um, where at?
North of the ponds. Runs north and south, right down the west fence.
Oh, it runs out to the ditch, don't it, and then it shoots back?
It shoots west, yeah. Runs right through the middle, that truck parking.
I don't care if we have to put a culvert from the north side to the south side, dig up our road and put a culvert under there to make sure the water goes from the south side to the north side. But we need to go out into the north field, we need to take our right of way back and dig a ditch on the north side.
It's built up five feet on that north side, it's just, it's a bad deal.
But I could try that and see where we go from that, if you want me to try to do that.
I mean, if she can get someone in here so it would relieve some stress off of you, cause you're gonna have streets and everything else to do?
Just the way I feel, Jason, I mean, I know that, I mean...
I mean, we've got the permit to dump water into the state, right?
I got a permit to put the culvert in, right now, so, yes.
So, are any of our survey stakes still out there?
Boy, I don't know. We've got some on Fifth, but I don't think we've got any on Eighth left, unless it'd be the far east one, maybe, you know, down that fence line. Wouldn't take long to get them back in there, cause Randy knows right where they're at, I mean, if they're not there, but...
If we have to, we have to.
Yeah.
Cause we had it surveyed at one time.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we're probably gonna get survey stakes in there before you have anybody look at it, really, probably.
Well, if you're gonna hire anybody else, you probably should, yeah.
I'd make contact with them people and see who comes out here and looks at it. And hopefully by next meeting, we can make a decision of what to do.
Anything else on truck parking? Moving on, how about the power plant engine?
We're still hoping for the first of June. That's what Mike told me, somewhere close to the first of June, so, maybe by next meeting, we might have guys here, so.
We got swimming pool? I think it's got water in it. It covered.
What else we got up there?
Are we talking tonight, or are you...
I said what? What we got up there, what do you mean?
Like, how is the pool coming along?
It's full of water, and...
As far as you know, we got everything done, so we may take it off there. That's what I was asking.
Yeah, cause you remember, I sat there and said I had the flag pull, or those poles up for the bong, and then all that was done, should be last meeting, so...
There's, did you finish up the shade?
The shade? Yeah, the poles are up, we're ready to go with it.
Yeah, there's, there's some, there's some little things. Stephanie and I are gonna get back together once she opens and reevaluate and just make sure that, so, I would like to leave it open, please.
What day does it open? Saturday, April?
Usually, usually that Saturday.
They're, they're cleaning it now.
We discussed the vacuum truck repairs. Anything on the sewer lagoons?
Nope, he hasn't called me back yet.
New business?
Um, I would just like permission for my CMB for Jubilee next weekend, just need a motion to approve it.
Second. Got a motion and a second? Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Yes, I don't know. I think that winds it up, except exactly session, and I don't see one, so, unless you guys have got something else, or...
Motion to adjourn.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn? Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed?